Welcome, everybody. I'm thrilled to see everybody here and I want to thank everybody for taking time out of their really busy schedules because I know everybody's super busy. And though we are down one council member, I'm sure everybody by now knows that Jason Ritchie has resigned, but we will, we will be back up to speed as soon as possible. I want to thank him for all the time that he did put into this because anybody who does public service deserves a huge thank you. So I want to tell you that I'm thrilled to see everybody here and start off on a really positive note. So, and with that, I'm just going to turn over the reins to Wendy. She's just full of energy. So I'm thrilled to death.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could make some welcoming comments myself. If I can just follow you and then I'll turn it over to Wendy. I wanted to say good afternoon, council members and staff. I'm very pleased to welcome all of you to this important event today and to share my enthusiasm and hope that we can all come away with a very clear vision and confirmed direction for the council, city council facing work plan and embrace more unity and communication so that staff can be confident that they are proceeding with the important work of the city in a manner identified and supported by the city council. I'd like to recognize and thanks and key players that have made this event possible. I'd like to thank Janelle. Always mess up her last name. Terrace. I'd like to thank Janelle of Aperture EQ for conducting the interviews with council and staff and pulling all of that information together for Dr. Wendy Fraser, who is here with us now as our consultant and our facilitator today for this council retreat. Thank the directors and deputy directors and staff that work so diligently and professionally every day, but also who put in an extra effort into compiling and developing the high level work plan that we will review with you, council, and submit for your review and approval. And to Debbie Beadle and Mike Sugg for their endless efforts to pull all of this together with our consultants and our staff and you council so that your materials, the agenda and the arrangements are well coordinated. So you have a successful event. This type of event is always full of unknowns and adjustments are expected. But know that we all worked very hard to provide you with what we hope will be what you need in the way of information and support to try to assist you in further developing the relationships, cohesiveness, vision and goal achievement necessary for leading this city. At the risk of being redundant, I am truly hopeful that the city council body will embrace this effort and find commonality and consensus wherever possible and continue to support the persons responsible to carry out, carrying out this important public policy decisions and directions that you provide over the next few days. Keep in mind that although we gave this a valiant effort, it is provided with the understanding and recognition that we may not have got it all correct. So changes and modify modifications are expected. But know that we look forward to your guidance here so that we can execute your direction with confidence as we step off into a new fiscal and calendar year. Like budgets, the planning calendar will likely require modifications as we go along. But it should always be looked to as a reminder, a guidepost, as a beacon that we should constantly reference so that we don't lose our way. Therefore, I urge you to focus on policy directions and let us sort out some of the details so we don't get mired down in the minutia, but can bring back to you the details and answers where you feel we need it and where you need it so that we can accomplish the mission and help you in building and approving a workable planning calendar, build upon the mutual respect and appreciation for each other. And so the staff can do the heavy lifting for you for the, and for the community that we serve. I'll end by saying, thank you for the opportunity to serve you, the city council of the city of Sammamish and these heartfelt, dedicated, public service oriented employees and the lovely people and families of Sammamish. Thank you, Mayor. And with that, Wendy, I'll give you the floor.
Thanks, Dave. Welcome, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here and to do everything we need to do over the next day and a half to give you a chance to connect stronger, to have some of the conversations around the, the, the improving of communication that you had asked for in those one-on-one interviews with Janelle. We have opportunities that we're weaving in for that. We have opportunities built into the design for you to have some conversations around the work plan and the priorities and that comes tomorrow. And so I'd like to just kind of share just a slight bridge and architecture of how, how the agenda was, is kind of designed and see if you have any particular questions before we, before we launch in. I will also occasionally, the nice thing about Zoom is that I can add in things like I'm just putting into the chat, the agenda, right? So just in case somebody doesn't have it available to them right now, there it is. You can download that and use that right away. I know that that was sent out early. Pam, you've got a question.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to note, I love that, you know, Zoom and Teams allow us to have chat, but from a transparency and a public access perspective, how will, will the chat be made available with the recording since we're not live streaming this? How is all of this going to be made available to the public?
It has to be for OPMA purposes.
I understand. So I'm asking, how is that happening?
I have the ability as the person, it's my host room to save the chat. It comes out in text version. It kind of gives the time stamp, who said it, and then whatever the, the chat piece is. And I'll include that as part of the recording and email that to, to Debbie.
From like a public consumption standpoint, that sounds really hard. Like there'll be this video of the Zoom meeting and then there'll be this separate file that I would have to try to piece together, correct?
Right. Other than that, there are people designed, and I was going to introduce Lita, our city clerk. We'll be making notes, right? So she's kind of capturing the minutes. And we have both Debbie and Mike Sugg also who are making notes as well. So you're getting three ways of kind of recording your time. You're getting the, the video recording. In the video recording, you'll see everything. You'll, in the video recording, you actually see the chat show up. So you're going to see that. What will not be available in the video recording is the ability to click on any of the handouts, but all those handouts will, are already made available on the website.
Okay. So, so if you're watching the video, you'll see the chat. So people won't have to piece it together themselves.
Yes.
Okay, great. And then just out of curiosity, is there any reason why we're not live streaming this so that it could be available to, to folks to watch real time?
I'm not sure if I can.
Councilmember Stuart, it was just the logistics of pulling everything together and not, and because it was all remote, it would have meant another employee over there and we just put it aside, decided to record it. Last year, he just had an audio recording. So at least this year, there's a video recording. So we just didn't get caught up in that.
Thank you. And then just to share with the group, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do have a commitment from two to three that I was unable to move for this. So I will be kind of, you know, muting everything from two to three and I will rejoin after that.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. So we knew.
Excellent. Thank you. So briefly around the, the architecture of our time, your, we'll be beginning in a moment with what I call a check-in. In terms of group development and, and, and the strengthening of relationships, getting everybody's voice in the room is important. So the invitation is for you in a moment, you'll be introducing yourself briefly and giving up to five words, what your favorite feature about Sammamish, right? So we'll be doing that. And then we'll be moving into a values exercise. Getting to know what values are important to you. And then there's a tool that I want to make available to folks that I use with groups that I find it's very useful around having deeper conversations based in those core values. And then we'll have an opportunity to talk at a group level about what are the core values that you want to shape your interactions together? You'll have a chance to kind of weigh in and talk about, do, do those turn into something more formal that you want to add into your rules of procedure? Or whether it's just really the conversation today about setting the tone together at the group level. When we're done with that, we'll be moving into talking about some of the communication specific ideas that people had in, in those pre-interviews that you, not pre-interviews, but the pre-retreat interviews with Janelle. There were several things that emerged from that. And I think it's always important to honor the time people took to, to give your input. I wanted you to see how your input weaved into the design of the, the two days, the day and a half here. And then give you a chance really to make that real. So we'll be beginning that conversation today. We'll be doing it at the council level with the areas that you have control and influence over with yourselves. And then when we pick it up again tomorrow morning, we will continue that. And then we will weave in, there'll be some areas that the city, I'm calling like city team, I guess that's Dave and his directors. That there were some things that they could respond to in terms of some of the specific areas that you were looking for, some of the improvements around when the agenda comes out, right? And things like that. So we're, we're, we're beginning there. Getting to some agreement and that again leads into tomorrow. And then you'll be talking about your priorities and work plan. Today, there's a little bit of time for Mike Sugg to share a little bit about how the work plan was developed. So that you, again, you can see the linkage between your input and how that shows up in the plan. The proposed plan, your input around priorities, how's that showing up? Just to kind of give you a sense to think about that overnight. And we'll be ready for the conversation tomorrow. If there's time, we will have a chance to talk about city values. It's a nice way to kind of bookend your time together, but because we're talking about values at both the individual level, the group level. And then if we have time, we even then start, start the conversation about when you imagine the values for the city. And, and those are some of the pieces that can help with a future strategic plan in which Dave will also be talking with you a little bit about. But the reason why that's, you know, we're waiting to see if we have time for that. It depends on the nature and the depth and the length of the conversations that you have tomorrow. Does that make sense? So you want to make sure that, you know, you walk out with some, some solid improvements around some of the areas that you've identified in terms of communication. And then you're, you're getting your questions answered and to make sure that you feel confident in putting forward the priorities for the city. We want to make sure that there's enough time for that. If you get that done and we still have time, that's the piece that we will work in toward the end. So that's the architecture. I hope that, you know, with Zoom, you have the ability, I think it's lovely. I'm really appreciative that you have your cameras on. I think that if you need to step away for a moment and we haven't had an official break, you do what you need to do as a, as a human being, go and take care of yourself, but we will have time this afternoon. There will be a break in the mid part of our, of our time today. So I'm wondering, are there any initial questions either about the design of the agenda? What we're trying to get done or anything about Zoom? Okay. Well, then let's do this. Let's do our quick check-in. I'm imagining if you could again, just say your name, the role that you have, whether you are elected member or council member, or if you're a member of the city team here to support it. And we'll just kind of leave it at that. If we have any additional guests, we just invite you to just listen to, to those who are involved in the meeting and we won't have you do your particular check-in, but we're grateful that you're here and observing the process. Because I don't know who's who in the, in the list here. So anyway, let's go ahead and, and in the way I like to do this is once you're done, once you say your name and your role and up to five words about something about Sammamish, a feature, a favorite feature, you get to call in the next person until everyone with their camera is on, has spoken. Who wants to start? Mike.
We're just finding the unmute button there. Hello, everyone. Mike Sugg, senior management analyst for the city manager's office. And I will pick the low hanging fruit. My favorite thing about Sammamish is the natural beauty. And I will kick it over to the mayor.
I know you were going to do that. So Karen Moran, council member, currently mayor. I, I am going to say friends and the friendliness and Sammamish, the trees and beauty parks and the invents and gatherings. And I'm going to kick it over to Erin.
Hello, I'm Aaron Anton. I'm the assistant city manager. Favorite thing, natural beauty is great. I appreciate family friendly environment as well. And I'm going to stay with row one here for 2000. Let's go with David Pyle.
Thank you, Aaron. David Pyle, community development. Some of the things I like about Sammamish, I, I really appreciate the, the connectedness of the community and the way in which people work together. I also really appreciate the, the, the staff body and how we collaborate in order to help support the community. And I'll pass it off to Kevin Teague.
All right. Thank you. My name is Kevin Teague, the deputy, deputy director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. And a couple of things that I'm that I appreciate about Sammamish is great parks and connected community. And I will pass it off to Kelly Hildy.
Hello, Kelly Hildy, deputy director of community development. And my favorite thing about Sammamish is its park system. And I'm going to hand it over to one of our newest team members, Ms. Marshall.
Kelly, my name is Lisa Marshall. I am the city attorney and I've been here about 11 days, 15 days. And I was able to serve as a city attorney from, by way of a law firm, but now I'm in a city employee and very happy to be here. The thing I like the most about Sammamish is the open space, the green, how green everything is because of the preservation of open space trails and parks, particularly Soaring Eagle Park, my favorite. And I'm going to pass the baton to Dave Ruda.
Thank you, Lisa. And again, welcome. I'm Dave Rudet, your city manager. I've been here for nearly a year. Next month, February 18th will be one year. And my special things about Sammamish is first family and being close to my grandchildren. And then the environment, it's just spectacular, the trees and the parks. And then because of being public service oriented, it's, it's the city staff. They're so city oriented with a strong desire to serve. And with that, we'll call on Chief Pendry.
Hey there, everyone. Dan Pendry, chief of police. And for me, Sammamish is home and history. And I will pass it on to Pam Stewart.
Thank you, chief. Pam Stewart, city council member. Five, five words I like about Sammamish, parks, family, kids, the staff. And I, I've been struggling with the word, but, because I can't come up with a single word, but the desire of the community to, to help others and to not, you know, not be selfish, but to, to really appreciate that we, you know, appreciate what we have and know that not everyone has it. Got to find a vocabulary word for that. And I will pass it on to, to Lita.
There we go, on the unmute button. Thanks, Pam. I wanted to, a little bit about myself, I believe a hashy city clerk. Having lived in Sammamish for almost 30 years, I, I've got a, probably a long list of things that I love about Sammamish. Basically, starting with family and friends that I've accumulated over all the years, the community, the friendships, the, the parks and the outdoor space. There's, I could go, the list goes on, but I, I really enjoyed being here in a part of the city and a part of the, the community. I will pass this on to, let's see, Celia.
I didn't see Celia. Maybe we'll try Debbie Beadle.
Hi, I'm Debbie Beadle, city manager assistant. I've been at Sammamish, worked here for many, many years. Favorite things about Sammamish are the trees, the beauty, the view out of my window and the parks. And I will pass it on to Jim.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Jim Hominek, IT director. A couple of things about Sammamish that I really enjoy. Just the atmosphere in general, that the, the community and the multiculturalism of, of everybody around is very embracing. Really enjoy that. And of course, just the environmental aspect of Sammamish, the way the city has kind of carved out its niche in the forest, basically. So it's pretty cool. Who should I pass it on to? How about Jeff?
Hi, I'm Jeff Elikis, Public Works Director. I've been here about five and a half months. Things I like are the staff's commitment to excellence and I love the coyotes and deer outside my window. And I will pass this on to council member Train.
I like this Kent Train, council member. I like the second growth forest. Lake sunsets. And the Sammamish Stewart's volunteers. Oh, and I'll pass it on to council members Ken Gamblin.
Thank you, Ken. Hi, everybody. Council member Ken Gamblin and I'm a council member. And five words, um, Sammamish has the sweetest stare. And I'll pass it over to Kristi.
And council member Kristi Melchow, presently serving as the deputy mayor. And I'm a rule follower and she said favorite feature. So my favorite feature, and there's a lot of them in Sammamish, but the, my favorite is the Ebreak Creek Ravine. And I picked that because if you get down into the ravine, it's like you're nowhere near a city. It's amazing down there. And with that, it seems appropriate to kick it over to Danica Globocar.
Thanks, Kristi. I've walked that ravine, by the way, and I also love it. So Danica Globocar, I'm normally the stormwater program manager and just acting in a temporary capacity as deputy director of public works, helping Jeff and the department out. My favorite feature, besides, you know, working with such a wonderful professional, technically competent staff, but the feature I would say is the Lower Commons Park because that was my favorite just to go out during lunchtime and walk around. So I'm definitely missing that during quarantine. I don't get my, my daily park walk. So, and I will kick it over to Chris from finance.
Hi, I'm Christine, any of the deputy finance director. And I didn't pick up on this was supposed to be a feature, but my favorite five words are the excellent cooperation among all departments. And I will pass it off to, it gets harder as we've all done this. I can't find anybody we haven't done yet.
I can go. Yeah. Okay, Celia, go ahead. That, yeah, sorry. I, for some reason I can't turn on my camera, which is fine. And I had some problems before. Anyway, Celia Wu, communications. My favorite part of feature of Sammamish is really the opportunity to work with the other public servants in the city, especially during such a critical time such as COVID. I think that, um, it's, it's, I, I just so admire the dedication and the service that everyone on this team is, is giving to the city and I'm so honored to be part of it. So thank you.
Celia, who do you want to hear from next?
Oh, Chief Clark.
Sorry. Uh, let's see, who didn't go, um, who Debbie, did Debbie go already? Debbie Beadle? Yes. Okay.
Councilmember Ross and Chris, Chief, very chief haven't gone.
Chief Clark then.
All right.
Okay.
Simple, two things. Well, first of all, Jeff Clark, Eastside Fire and Rescue, proudly serving Sammamish. So Sammamish is my favorite partner city. Please don't tell the others. And the people, and then my favorite person, the police chief.
Who do you want to hear from next, Jeff?
All right, council member Ross.
Glad to hear Jeff's finally learning.
Donut bribery, isn't it?
Yeah, that's good. I'm council member Ross and what I, how I describe Sammamish best or the feature is it's a hybrid community, melting rural suburban. It's very nice.
Nice. Thank you. All right. Has everybody who is?
I don't think we heard from Angelique.
Yeah. You can say who else has, thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Last but not the least, I guess. I'm Anjali Meyer and I'm the director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. I've been with the city for a while. I've also lived here. So there's a lot that's a rubbish. A lot of features that I enjoy. Obviously, the parks, the natural beauty, our lakes, the sense of community, safety, quality of life and family and our volunteers.
Thank you. Anybody else that we missed? All right. I'll just put my two cents in, even though I don't live in your lovely community. The features that, that strike me the most was certainly the beauty. And then is Beaver Lake in Sammamish. Okay. I have many fond memories of a summer camp that used to be there, Camp Cabrini. And I sing the song in my head still, right? And sing about Beaver Lake and all of that. So I have some, some fond childhood memories of places there. So anyway, that's my, that's my lovely connection to your community. And again, thank you to everybody else who's present in the room. Sure that you had particular ideas about features that you love about this community and it's clear because you would be here witnessing this retreat. And there's things on your mind about that, I'm sure. So I would like to invite us now to shift gears and think about, I'm going to think about values, right? We're first going to look at it, like I mentioned, at the, at the individual level. And I, I believe that the stronger that we know ourselves, right? The clearer we are about what, what core values shape us, right? Then that shows up in, in how I communicate, how I make decisions, how I engage with others. And I think that it's really an important set of conversations to learn about others that I work with, to find out what's important to them, right? Because within that, you can find out more information about them, but we can find areas that we have connectivity. I also care about that. That's also one of my core values, right? And that starts to build strength that's, that builds bridges. And I'm a firm believer, and of course, there's, there's team and group research that support this, that the, the more we know about each other, the stronger the connectivity between people, then the, the group can have really important conversations. You can handle challenges and setbacks so much better because we have a framework that supports us. So that's what we're going to spend a little bit of time here. And I'm going to put into the chat. This was also sent out in advance. It's two pages on what I'm just calling the value. Well, it's called value cards. And again, if you don't have this already emailed to you, feel free to pull that down and look it up. So first, I'll give you about 20, 30 seconds just to make sure that you have it available to you. And either it's showing up on your screen or perhaps if you have printed it and it's next to you. All right. Show of hands if anybody needs any support to kind of get your hands on it. All right. Lovely. That's the one thing that's nice about this is you can put your hand up, thumbs up, you know, we can see each other right away. All right. Here's the first part of this exercise. But before we dive into it, I, I just want to ask you, and I'm not looking for any textbook answer. But how would you describe what a value is, right? Maybe if you were going to describe it to a younger person who doesn't know what a value is, right? What comes to mind? How would you describe what a value is? Please. And, and is it all right? Do I have? Do I have permission to call people by their first names? Is that all right? Beautiful. Okay, Pam, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so if I had to describe this to, you know, a young person, maybe, you know, one of my kids. A value to me is something that guides how you behave, how you act, how you make decisions. Quite simply, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, Pam. What else comes to mind? All right. Anything else? Kristi, do you have something? You kind of took yourself off mute out of curiosity.
Sure, yeah. No, just things that you're unwilling to compromise on sometimes. Being values.
Nice. Yeah, and what helps us, right, is the clearer I am about it, then I can hold it. It's like your own true north, right? Your own magnetic north. And, you know, I don't know about you, and I believe this to be true for most people, that whenever I feel that I'm aligned with my core values, you know, I operate better. I have kind of a cleaner conscience. I breathe easier, right? And it's not always easy to walk that line. But there are times when if I feel like I'm straining away or, you know, moving away from what I say to be true for me, I also feel that, right? I feel tension, and it shows up both in my body and in my words and all of that. So, you know, the more congruent we can be, the better. And we're never always perfect, right? We never, even though I have these core values, sometimes I stray and I have to bring myself back. And so it's just all, that's all part of life and our journey. But definitely a set that kind of drives in our behaviors. And like I said, it can be our foundational pieces that help us frame decisions and how we go about things. So here's the first part of the assignment. I would like for you, these words on these two pages are just a subset of different values that I've researched over time. And it's not meant to be, of course, the whole list. And you may find that as you read some of these values and maybe even the subheading under it, maybe the subheading doesn't work for you, and you want to scratch those words off and write something else because, you know, this is the way you're defining your core values. But my invitation is to look at these two pages, and you'll see that there's even a blank one in case you want to add something. I'd like for you to circle the ones that really matter to you. And if you could, I'm looking if you could kind of land with about, you know, eight-ish that might best describe what's most important to you. So you're going to have about five minutes. It's 1:35, so I'll check back in about 1:40. And I'll tell you what the next part of the assignment is. So individually, circle the ones which matter to you, which most reflect you.
Per person.
Yes.
Approximately.
Approximately, yeah, with a little bit of synthesis to come back into, um, into the room. Be curious about, you know, what people are saying are important to them. See if they, if there's alignment perhaps and things that might be on your list. That might be on some of your colleagues' list. So, and then we will come back. So enjoy yourself.
Can you describe again how we get there?
Um, in a moment, I'm going to open up a room and you're going to get a little dialogue box that says you've been invited to join room two. You just click it and then you're going to be bounced into that room. Then you will see little notes from me, like there's five minutes left, there's two minutes left. And then, um, it'll say the host is closing the room and you guys all get bounced back into here. There is no recording of the small breakout rooms. All right. So these are just you, and this is at the personal, this is right. It's just at the personal level. You're sharing what's important to you. And when you come back, you'll have the invitation to share some of those highlights. All right. Beautiful. All right. Enjoy yourselves and guests, you get to stay with me. Hi, everybody who's here. Welcome. All right, let's set in the clock. For those in the main room here, there's about two minutes left before they come back. Little less than that. Welcome back. Nice to have everybody back in the room. I know that using Zoom, you know, when that countdown is done, it's like, you know, you don't have a choice. You're like, I'm coming back. So that's both a gift and a curse in terms of groups, right? Because sometimes when you're in the room, you're like, oh, we need a little bit more time. And anyway, so I apologize if you were right in the middle of something really important that you were talking about. Uh, thank you for popping back in. Wanted to create a little bit of space for you to share your choosing. If there were, um, you know, insights that your group came up with, well, you know, did you have something in common? Was it useful to have each person kind of be able to just kind of describe what was important to them? I just wanted to create a little bit of space here to synthesize that. So tell me a little bit. Who'd like to go?
I'd be happy to go. So our, our group consisted of Erin, uh, Dave and myself. Um, so the two Daves got put in a room together. And, uh, we, we recognized that, um, that in, in walking through what each of our, um, primary, uh, values were that we identified with, that oftentimes a few, like three different values might have comprised one of the values that another one of, one of us had recognized. And we came up with the fact that we, we both, we all three resonate closely with trust and integrity. And that that happens to be, if you were to think of it as a circle that was divided in half with trust and integrity, that's wrapped with balance, um, because balance is threaded through all of it. And trying to make things work and figure out a path forward, we need to, to be considering the balance of objectives and the balance of all of the other, um, values that are out there and how do we fit all those in? But at the same time, our, our core was trust and integrity.
Thanks, David.
Oh, I'll go next. So I think ours was, it was interesting because ours in our groups, our group was, uh, Chris Ross and Kent Train and myself. And ours was similar, but it was, um, honesty and integrity.
Yeah, it's really interesting, right? When we have in small groups, just to, you know, to find out what similarities, right? And it's, it says a lot. It's really interesting to find out where there is, but then also where you might have used one word and someone else chose a different word, but maybe the way you described it, uh, might've been similar, which I think is really interesting. Any other insights from your, I know you only had 10 minutes, but, um, in your small group conversations about, about trust? Not trust, sorry, taking that word, uh, about values.
I'll go. It's Selya. Okay. Um, so I was in a group with Kelly and Kevin. Um, and so, um, we shared, uh, there, 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 we basically agreed that there was, there were a lot of values here that resonate with us. Um, and we spoke to some of the personal values that we carry with us to work. You know, faith, family, trust, um, diversity, um, teamwork, et cetera. I mean, you know, so there was nothing that we really found that we, you know, didn't want to de-emphasize. One of the things that, um, we spoke about was in terms of the, the, you know, so, so my reaction to this was that I, I looked at it more from the lens of, um, always from comms, right? And the fact that, um, here, since we work in a news desert here, right? And there is so much disinformation all the time or non-information being passed around here that government has a really important role and comms in particular has an important role of making sure that we are out there. You know, there's an education component, not just a knowledge component to, to supply transparent, reliable, relevant information to our residents, especially during these times of COVID, for instance. So, so that, that, you know, and, and it has to be values driven in terms of, uh, in terms of what we, you know, of that education and information sharing effort. Um, and, and, you know, we, we show our, our values every day and I wanted to, um, just talk about a recent issue where we showed our values. Um, and that was when there was concern that, uh, about Parler, um, and being hosted by Epic and the city put out a statement clarifying that the city has no relationship with Epic. And that, and, and, and you can see behind that simple statement, that was a value, of values that the city was reflecting. And I thought it was the right thing that, that the city did.
Thanks for that example. Yeah. Appreciate that. All right. Any other insights anybody feels that you'd like to put out here for the whole group to learn? Okay. Here's, here's my next invitation. Uh, in your list, for you, there may be one that really is perhaps most important to you. One that maybe is an umbrella for others, right? What I'd like for you to do in the next two minutes is to think about the one value. If you were to say, I want to be, you know, this is perhaps most important to me, or it's one that you might describe, kind of like maybe encompasses your others. I want you to narrow it down to one and then you're going to be invited to change your name, to include the value at the end of that. So I will show you how to do that in a moment. All right. Through Zoom. But the first part is, is if you would please just narrow it down to, to you, what your overall core value is. This is hard work, but I'd like for you to do just one.
Taken from this list.
Yeah. Or again, you were invited, if there's a different word that's more important to you, that's fine too, if it's not on that list. Your choice. All right. Does everybody at least have your one? Pretty close? Okay. Here's how you change your name. If you can see in my name, I have added my, my number one. So if you were to put your mouse cursor over your, over your picture in Zoom, you'll see the word mute in the upper right-hand corner, but you also see three ellipses, three of the dots. If you click on those three dots, if you, you'll see a menu pop up and you'll see the word rename. Right? If you would just add your number one, um, you know, and again, if you wanted to shorten your name, just Wendy Family, you know, that's fine too. This is just really for us for today. Uh, it'd be nice to see what people are saying is most important to them. Nice. Some of you are so long. Let's see Jeff. I don't know Fire Chief Jeff. Oh, loyalty. You put it in behind your name. There you go. I was looking at it at the end. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. You gotta understand, Wendy, that, uh, the fire department's a little bit slow. They kind of wait for us anyhow. So it's taking its time.
Dan.
I was so nice to you. What happened?
I love it. It's fun. I used to do some work with, um, police and fire chaplains. So it's always back and forth. I'm, I'm in the system. I'm married to a law enforcement officer myself. So.
Um, my condolences.
You're funny. I like it. Okay. Um, let's just take a look, look around and see, uh, you know, first, what are you noticing, um, about what people are offering as their, as their number one? Seen any, anything that's striking you about that?
There's a lot of integrity.
There is.
Well, I think you also, you gotta, and I'm sure this, I know this is with everybody, uh, probably is that here, there's personal and there's, um, your business side of things. So, you know, family is key. Yeah, that's, I, I, I mean, uh, with me, um, from a business side, integrity is an umbrella that covers a lot of other things.
Thanks, Dan.
I was thinking that, um, I put service as my first priority, but it was a tie between that and courage. And I know I can see that Ken Gamble put that as his, um, and, and the reason I was torn between those two is because I think it takes courage sometimes to have all the other ones. So just, just my two cents.
Thanks, Lisa. Yeah. I'm curious about something. And Christie, may I ask, um, can you tell me a little bit about your, your value choice? And, and tell me about that.
I cheated a little bit.
It's all good.
It's the title of a poem. I used to have it on my license plate and I think, um, it encompasses a lot of what I had on my list anyway. And so that's why I chose it.
Thank you. Can you give us a, a small snapshot as to some of the pieces in that poem that most resonate with you?
Um, courage is definitely a, a part of that, um, that when we go through somewhat tumultuous times, that you kind of have to hang on and fight through those. And, uh, yeah. I don't know. Uh, you can look up the poem. It's again, it's called Invictus.
Isn't that the one that Nelson Mandela recited a lot and it's in a movie? Where the, it's the soccer team that win.
Yes, Nelson Mandela is often tethered to the poem, but he is not the author of it. But yeah.
Nice. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Latin, Latin definition is, uh, where did, where was it? I just lost it.
I think it's.
Yeah, invincible.
Lovely. Thank you. Well, thank you for sharing a little bit about yourselves, right? I think that, um, again, the clearer I am about what my true north is, what my core values are, again, the better relationships I have with others. Uh, I can communicate better. Uh, we can find even, uh, playing fields. You know, it shows up again in my behaviors, my decision-making and all of that. And it gives me a place in which I can have conversations with them. And that's what I wanted to share next is I'd like to just, um, I want to share a tool. And then we're going to move into talking about, um, at the group level, what values, um, do you want to, um, you know, purport would be your, would be your core values about how you want to operate as a group. Okay? So the tool is, uh, this second handout that I'm going to put into, actually just let me fix one thing. Move it to everyone, give everyone a chance to look at it. Um, feel free to, to pull that down. And I'm going to describe it and just invite you to think about opportunities in which you could use it. So I'll give you a second to pull that down and open it up. All right. So here's, here's how I use this particular tool and how I have found stronger ways to connect with people who I might have a difference of opinion about, or I might be experiencing some results that make me go, huh? Right? So the invitation in this is, you know, there will be times when we need to work with others and some things just aren't working well. Okay? And what we need to do first is to ask ourselves, what do I think might be the core values at play? Uh, and I give a couple of examples. There was a, a team I was working with that, uh, they actually gave it a shot. I don't know if you remember the phenomenon when we tried to have self-managed work teams, self-directed work teams, and they were, they were moving the supervisor among themselves every six months. So someone on the team would be supervisor for six months. And when I got called in to start working with this team, um, team members were, the results were, they were really upset. And I was trying to find out, well, what was going on? And they said, if we weren't at our desk at eight, 12, one and five, um, our boss left us post-it notes. And for every six minutes we were late, we had to turn in a tenth of leave and things like that. So having those conditions, right? The, the result, uh, which was the third column, people in that team where they were upset, they were frustrated. They felt, um, you know, disrespected. I mean, it was really a tough moment walking in and they had only had this person supervising for two months. So when I checked in with, you know, I, I interviewed everybody and when I checked in with the person who was that temporary supervisor, I asked her what was going on and what was important to her. And she said, what's important to me is a strong work ethic. And if you think about that for a moment, I think every one of us here in this room, this Zoom room could say a strong work ethic. I can buy into that, right? At a core value level, you know, it's, it's like integrity and it was strong work ethic. But the way, and that's that first column is what do you believe is at the core, right? But what we do naturally, and sometimes even without thinking about it, is, is we enact our. But what we do naturally and sometimes even without thinking about it is, is we enact our values. So how she was showing that again was those actions that she felt so strong about time and making sure that people were ready for those eight precise hours, right? And she thought that she was doing the right thing, living her value. What she wasn't as open to or understanding is that there was an impact, there's results from those choices of, of that particular behavior. So if we didn't like the results, right? Then the invitation is to think of, you know, we're not trying to change what's core about somebody. Cause I find that if you, if you say, hey, Wendy, you know, I don't want you to do that, but if I'm, if it's tied to one of my core values, I might be a little bit more reticent around wanting to make some of those adjustments, wanting to make some of those changes. So to me, this particular tool has been both a pathway and it gives me some language in which, in which to work with others. So I start the conversation about what's important to you. All right. Strong work ethic, great. Do you, and then how does that show up and do you recognize, because I want to come at it from a place of curiosity first instead of judgment. I don't think people intend to have, you know, against some of those, you know, I don't intend to frustrate people. I don't intend to hurt people or do all of the things that might show up in that third column. But we need to be aware, leadership, right, is I need to be conscious and aware of my impact on others. So that's why opening up for that third column to say, here's the results. And if we buy into the core value, the leverage is what are their behaviors? And that's where the dialogue comes in. You know, let's give something else a shot. Let's try other ways in which you can manifest what's important to you, right? So same thing about people being, you know, I've, I've experienced people really appreciating and wanting honesty as part of their core value. But sometimes if you're brutally honest, you can also leave people in the wake and they shut down and listening. So again, if we don't want that, but we want truth and transparency and dialogue here, how do we go about doing that? Well, tie in first to that core value and then have, you know, and, and people need to know, we need to be aware again and mindful of the results. So curious, uh, we, we don't have time to kind of play with the tool. I just wanted to share that. I find that it has been really useful for me in a lot of different contexts. Are there any questions or can you see the usefulness of having this kind of conversation with others? Thanks, Dan. All right. I saw some nods, a few thumbs up, yeah. I do this with citizens a lot. I've been in public sector for, um, most of my career, right? And so part of this, again, will find bridge, bridges with, um, you know, with finding that common ground with what's important to people. So hopefully this will be useful to you. Okay. Without anything else, let's move into the next piece, right? So we've been operating and learning core values at the individual level. We're going to start talking about it at the group level. And I'm going to weave in a break into this. So here's, here's what I'm envisioning. In a moment, I'm going to break out, um, Dave and his director team. Is there a team and you could use this time to generate what are the core values that you want to operate at your level, right? And then we'll keep, um, we'll keep the council here and then anybody else that wants to just kind of observe. But this will be a conversation among council members, right? When you think about what are the core values that you want to shape your interactions together, right? Not just at meetings, but just, you know, when you think of yourself as a team, uh, as a council, what, what might those be? And there's a tendency to want to add a, a bunch of them. You know, the more you can kind of keep it tight into, you know, the few five, six that might just really speak the loudest to you about how you want to operate. Feel free to turn these into statements if you want to. Again, what are the core values at a minimum that you want to help shape your, your connectivity together? And, uh, you know, if you feel like you want to give examples under that, that's fine. It's all, it's all up to you. So in a moment, I'll be moving Dave and his team into that and we'll use this room for counsel. Hi Karen.
Is that a five or six-ish?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, whatever you think. I like ish too. When I worked at the Department of Revenue, they did not like the word ish. Accountants don't like ish, auditors don't like ish, which is fine. But yeah, we'll find something that kind of finds your, your sweet spot. And, and I know you don't have everybody here. I know, um, Pam is not present. So maybe this could be the beginning of your conversation together, but it's a nice way to, to bridge the conversation around values. And now you get to say, what do we want to shape our interactions together? Sound good? So we're going to have about 20 minutes or so to do this. And then I wanted to weave in a break for everybody in this too. So we're going to take about 30 minutes total for this, for this experience, all right? Sound good? Okay, do you want to take your break first? Yes, no, maybe? I'm seeing a few. All right. Let's take the break first. Um, and actually, let's just make it easy on us. I have 2:17, so let's come back at 2:30 and then we will launch into the group level conversation. Sound good? Sweet, okay. Thank you, everybody. Excellent. We'll still keep waiting for more of our colleagues to come back into the room. This is when we need one of those songs, right? Music, when you start to hear the music playing, bring people back. Or someone could volunteer to sing, right? You could do that, too.
That's the mayor's job.
Okay. All right, Karen, round everybody up. Start singing.
In the heat of the night.
There you go.
The lights. When I'm in the city and the moon was rising over the sun. I will be there in that city. Karaoke time is now over. Everybody better show up so they don't have to listen to me sing anymore.
Your courage, Trent. Nice job, nice job.
And the name is Kent, but Trent, uh, let's, stage name is Trent. I like that. Trent Keen? Trent Keen will be here all night. That's right.
See, I'm owning my mistake. Sorry about that. Yeah, I was trying to combine your, your names there. So, sorry. And that was recorded too, so that's going to live in infamy, so I appreciate that. I paused for most of the break, but then, you know, that was recorded.
I, I definitely, uh, copy, I need copyrights on that and any royalties going forward, please.
Well, we have a lawyer in the house. I'm sure she can help us arrange that.
Yeah, Lisa, can you help me with that? Thank you.
Good. All right. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to open up the room for, um, Dave and his team of directors. So those of you that are deputy directors and other members, um, you get to hang out with, with us. We'll give them a chance to kind of generate at the team level their own, um, chance to, uh, so you have 20 minutes. So you guys will come back in about 20 minutes. I will, I will set that up. And then for the rest of us in this space, so that it feels like the council members are having a conversation among themselves. I'm going to invite that the rest of us, um, I'll be facilitating, but if you would turn your video off for this 20 minutes, um, so that Karen and Kent and Christie and Chris can have a conversation together when, one of your council member colleagues, Ken, was saying that he had some things, so he was going to be popping in and out. So hopefully he'll come back in for this conversation at some point. And then Pam said she'd come back, but I think she's going to miss this part. So we'll, we'll talk in a moment about how to weave in their particular, you know, input, right? But just to kind of give the four of you a chance to think about, you know, what are the core values that you want, um, to operate at, at the council level? You know, and one way to look at this is you might think about a very special experience that you've had working at a group level that was really successful, both in how people work together and treated, but how they got work done, how you disagreed, right? There's, there's core values and principles that weave in effective, effective groups. So, you know, what are the ones that you want to highlight? And this is a chance for you to have a conversation together about that. What's important to you? And this is being, yeah, uh, Lita is taking notes. So the ideas that you generate will make sure that are, are recorded for you and given back to you. So again, those of you that are here, what's important to you in how you want to operate together?
So is this, like it up? Or is this, I, I don't understand. So this is being, is this?
As a council?
Notes for us?
Yes, so as a council, right? So I'm trying to give us a chance to kind of bridge the, the individual conversations that you had about what your core values were, right? Um, and to look at it like, so for example, Karen, you have integrity. How does that show up? I mean, you know, if you wanted as a council to say, you know, we believe in integrity, here's, here's what that looks like for us. It's like you're trying to kind of breathe life into it at, at the group level about, um, some of the core values that you want to operate and support you to have healthy conversations at the group level, um, to work best together, things like that.
Okay, so for me, and I, I can give an example.
Yeah, please do.
For me, that means, you know, not passing a, a tip that doesn't have funding with it.
That would be integrity?
Yeah. Because I, to me, that is integrity. That is, you know, um, otherwise we're lying to people. Um, so to me, that is integrity. So, um, that would be an example of it to me.
Yeah, because it's pretty clear to, it's pretty clear to me that the, the council is committed to the community. Right? And so, I mean, I, is commitment, is that one of our core values? Well, of course it is, right? But I like what you're saying, Karen. It's kind of like it's in my authenti-, uh, be authentic, right? Be, be real with who we are individually, but also collectively as a council, because there's not always, and here's that integrity piece, right? We don't always agree. But when the council makes a decision, whether I'm the one vote against, I still didn't have to turn around and have the integrity of the council and follow the wishes of the majority. And that's not always easy to do, but that's what has to happen on this council to, to function at, as a team, as a group, that's going to work out. Uh, it's going to, it's going to work. Right?
So I can offer something, including my dogs fighting in the background, so hopefully that's not coming through too loud. Um, so I was, um, paired up with Pam and, um, before we jumped in to discuss our values, Pam's like, I bet we have 80% of ours the same. And I disagreed and I said, no, I bet it's more like 50. And so I read my list and she would say yes or no, whether it was on her list as well. And then, and she read through her list. So we actually only ended up having three of eight in common and actually she had nine on her list. I held mine at eight. I mean, I think we all agree, we could probably all write every one of these qualities down. But I think one thing that Pam and I discussed is while our values are not identical, there's enough of an overlap with some of them and our overlaps were service, integrity and honesty. That every council member that is, you know, on this council, I, we all need to assume has the best of intentions. And while all of our values may not be identical, that's actually favorable for the council as a body that, um, our values will complement one another as we work through, um, different issues, so.
Thanks, Christie.
Yeah, I liked, uh, Ken's, uh, and I won't totally speak for him, I'll just turn it back on me, but that whole courage thing, in the definition, you know, it was to take a calculated risk. I think, uh, you know, there is definitely, it's going to require a council to be courageous and take those calculated risks so that we can move forward and become, I mean, the, the, I thought my vision is that, you know, for the city of San Amish to become, you know, continue to be, uh, a sustainable city that's a, uh, I think it's a northwest bedroom community. It's going to take courage, courage on our part to, to take some stands and to make some moves that are going to move, uh, the city forward to 2050 and beyond. And so, um, we have to be willing to make those sometimes uncomfortable, but calculated risks and show some courage.
I, I think the blending of values are critical in that when you got some risk adverse versus high risk, thinkers need to listen to each other. Because many times the high risk go too far on the edge, whereas the risk averse don't do, take enough risk. And so when you bring each other to a better position on the spectrum, you optimize your decision-making.
So listening then becomes a pretty high value.
No, I always.
Would you agree with that? Chris?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I, you know, all the time.
Yeah.
My, my, uh, wife's, uh, favorite saying is silence is golden. In that, and that does, that means you're listening instead of talking.
I just, I know that again, Lita's taking notes as well, but I thought that I would just try to kind of capture what I'm hearing. And so I want to loop back because Karen, I think that you offered something in the beginning that I didn't have, um, written down. So, you know, maybe we could kind of keep what's running in the, in the chat, just some of the things that you're talking about, right? And kind of describing a little bit more than just the word like you're doing, which is wonderful and I'll, I'll capture as much as I can here. So Karen, would you repeat, you know, in the very beginning, kind of like what you, what you were offering and maybe how that shows up in council deliberations or how you work with each other?
Um, well, I was just using the, one of the examples of integrity was, um, I think one of the hard things that we had to do, and it was, um, certainly not popular with a group, but, um, it was that we, we chose to not pass, um, something called, you know, we were looking at the TMP and then there's the CIP and, and we chose that we were not going to pass the, um, transportation plan that did not carry with it the dollars. You know, we were not going to try to hide from people that, uh, there were no dollars connected with these things. So we weren't going to base our future on something that was a lie, basically. We're not going to lie to the, you know, we're not going to lie to the public and tell them that these projects are indeed written down are going to happen and, you know, these, and so let's base all of our housing numbers and all of the, all these designs on it. I think that takes integrity. And that is certainly something that, um, should have been done for a long time.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if, let me ask you this, is it useful for you as a council to frame these in terms of the positive, in terms of what you're looking for? Uh, or do you want me to capture it in the, you know, kind of like the negative, we won't lie with each other? I mean, so instead of that, you know, what is it that the behavior you're, you're aiming for that we will, we will do what with our? It's more of the question, I, because I'm totally down with if you want, you know, however you want to frame these is good. But it's a question back usually with, with groups that I check in about. Do you want to frame these as what you're looking for?
Hi Wendy, it's Lisa Marshall. Sorry to interrupt you, but I'm in the wrong room. Could you please put me over in the room I'm supposed to be in?
Of course.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you. There you go. What do you think, Karen? What's your preference? I'm totally, you know.
Well, yeah, and I mean, I don't, I don't know if we necessarily want to use the, the CIP or the, I mean, I'm just, was just using an example. But I mean, I you know, Chris helped me with a wording. I just think we need to, you know, I think being honest with the public on decisions that are being made with the future of, you know, the city. I, I think we ought to be, that's the one thing that should be transparent and it hasn't been in the past.
Good. We'll get the essence down. And then when it comes back to you, and again, because you have some colleagues who aren't here, they'll get a chance to kind of weigh in on it, but I'm appreciative. So thank you for talking through that. And Kent, the other pieces around some of the authenticity that you were offering at first, I'm not sure I captured that as well. So what are some things that you wanted to make sure is captured here? That we haven't already?
Well, I was trying to authen- being authentic is kind of, that's integrity, right? Keep it real. Right? So if the sewer was, you want to bring up another subject, then the issue would be the sewer capacity, right? We need, we need to be honest about that. We need, keep it real. What, what's really going on here? My big deal is stormwater, right? So what are you going to do with the runoff? What are you going to do? How are we going to keep the water clean and get it clean before it gets to the lake? How are you going to manage that? So let's keep it real. What really is going on in the city? And be authentic about it. Should we, and then, then we can ask those questions, you know? Should we be changing our ordinances and laws? Should we be? Do we need to spend more money to collect more data? How about do we have the data already, but nobody knows where it is? But it's there. We just have to find it and do the work. Give, give staff the time. So, you know, being authentic about like for me, it's about the environment. I think most people already know that about me on the council. So the idea is like, if, if it's to protect the environment, then that, you know, that's where I'm coming from. So it's, it's okay. If you agree with me, that's great. If you don't agree with me, that's okay too. So and that takes courage, then that takes courage. That's where I was headed with, you know, be courageous and, and make, make, I make my decisions and I'm pretty confident that what I'm doing is best for the city, what's best for the residents and what's best for the environment. So I base, I mean, that's how I'm basing my decisions. Basing those decisions on the work that I'm doing on my own property, because I mean, I'm, I want clean, I know for life, I need clean water. So the water that comes down onto my property that has break dust and rubber and oil and pollutants, it's getting clean before it gets to, it's, it's at least getting cleaner. How clean it really is, I haven't collected all that data yet, but the reality that the water's cleaner. So and, and I'm, so I'm providing a service to the, I can throw out these words, right? There's this whole list of stuff that values that I have, you know? So I'm providing a service to the whole community by cleaning the water before it gets to the lake so that the lake is a better place, or it doesn't get any worse than where it already is. Well, that takes courage, right? Because some people would come in and say, well, heck, why don't you put eight homes on your property? Or six, or whatever I could get by due to code. Because I don't value that. What do I value? I have, I value clean water for the long haul. I love my trees on my property. Well, Mr. Train, Councilmember Train, why do you plant more trees on your property? Well, I told those Boy Scouts last night, you know, well, I'm managing my forest. I'm, I'm managing the forest so that you guys will get to see it because I'll be dead and gone. I want my second growth forest to be 400 years old. It's only 100, maybe 120 tops. So it's going to be here forever. And, and, and what's the value of, do, why do I value the tree? We heard, you know, individually parks and the trees and number one was the parks. You know, it's like you think 400 years down or 120 more years, 200 years. My tree, my trees on my property are going to be like 320 years old, holding 5,000 to 6,000 gallons of water, transpiring that back up into the air, cleaning the water, putting it back into the system. It's going to be sucking in CO2. So taking out the pollutants out of the air and then turning it into oxygen. Oh yeah, that's the other thing I need to live, clean air. So the value of my tree isn't just the wood. I was a forester. I understand the value of the wood. I was a logger. I, I understand the value of the wood, but the value of the tree is a lot more. It's free. It's kind of like, and Chrissy can attest to this too, the value of the wetlands. Right? What's the value of the wetlands? There's a lot more than what we think it is, or what, and, and the last thing I want to do is destroy any of that.
Sure.
Right? Because replacing it, replacing it is expensive. Right? For what it does for free, right? It doesn't cost me anything. What it does for free, it's going to cost me millions of dollars to replace for what it does for the environment, for, for everyone in the community. It's a benefit to everyone.
Thank you. Yeah. You know, what I'm hearing, it's, it's awesome around the alignment then of you at your, your core values level. And then also how you might be seeing that shape your participation and that, you know, the advocacy and the decision making that you propose right here at the council. So I appreciate that. I wanted to check in, we only have a few minutes left to kind of just, just as we have been, as I have been making some notes. And again, I know Lita's collecting more of the solid notes. You know, are these things that I'm putting into chat? Are they things that, that at least the four of you are saying, I can buy into that, right? Because I know you've been offering them in a way individually. You know, are these things that you want to hold each other to a standard of honoring as you yourself agree to honor these? At least what we're seeing so far. Are these things that you can all buy into?
Wendy, can I add something?
Of course.
When I talked about the spectrum of working together and sharing ideas to optimizing decisions, when it comes back to integrity, the integrity comes down to intent. If your intent is to support the common mission or the goal, which is often prescribed by the city's interest through legislation that's been passed and/or other factors. If you're not driving to the same goal and your intent is to undermine that goal, then you're not going to be at the table and you're going to feel left out of the discussion. But everybody's voice is valued in trying to accomplish execution of that common goal. So once, we have to, as a council, and we're not always on the majority decision. I'm not always on the majority decision. We have to respect what we've decided and work together to optimize it. It's destructive to come back and to try to destroy what's already decided. It's productive and with integrity to say, okay, I didn't get my best answer, but I'm going to help get, improve the course that was decided by the majority at the time. That's integrity.
Got it. Thank you, Chris. Absolutely. Yeah. And I know that this isn't a final list, but I wanted to be making sure that I'm capturing things. We've got about another minute and a half before the group comes back in. And I just wanted to kind of throw the door open if there's anything. Also, for example, I think Christie, you offered service integrity and honesty together. You know, is there anything else that you would add to that, that, that we can capture?
So those were just the overlapping qualities that Pam and I shared. Now, I don't know whether it's for me to disclose her entire list or whether our entire lists are, are relevant. But I just, again, I think the fact that we aren't all made up identically is an advantage for the council, not a disadvantage.
Absolutely. And yeah, no, we're not trying to disclose the individual pieces, just trying to find, you know, from your perspective, what you believe, you want to say, these are the values that I would love to see us operate at the, at the council level in the way in which we have deliberations and connect with each other and do our work and all of that. And so is there something that you would offer in particular, besides what we have here?
Well, I think the three that, you know, I shared that were overlapping are good. I mean, for me personally, because I don't feel like I should be sharing Councilmember Stewart's, the rest of her list for her. But, you know, knowledge is something that was on my personal list. And I think, you know, the definition, I think you left to be kind of open ended, whether we, the subheading underneath it, subscribe to it, to a T or not. But I don't think we all need to be subject matter experts. But I do enjoy, you know, the, the minutia and the details that some might think are beyond the scope of council, but I think they're really important in truly understanding subject matter to which we execute decisions on. So, you know, I would offer that Councilmember Ross is a subject matter expert when it comes to finances. So he, you know, brings that to the table. And I give, you know, him more weight and listening to what he has to say, knowing that that is his, you know, career path and that he is subject matter expert when it comes to, you know, accounting practices and finance. So it's, you know, that's a value. And then on subjects that, you know, we aren't necessarily experts in, kind of digging in on them, I think is important.
Christie, who was the third in your group?
There were just two of us.
Oh.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, welcome back, other team. Hope that time was useful for you to generate some of your own operating values that, you know, that you wanted to use at the team level. My suggestion is to, is to take this and to kind of keep it, you know, keep it present. You know, recognizing that there's a few council members who aren't here this afternoon, and then you'll have an additional one at some point to fill in that vacancy. These are the things that everybody needs to weigh in on. If I'm being held accountable in a group for certain ways in which you operate, right? The core values, everybody needs to kind of weigh in on it. So thanks for getting the conversation started. My hope is that, again, you use this, that it'll be meaningful in terms of having the conversations that you need. So next steps, did that make sense? I know that it'll be part of the, the meeting notes, you'll get it back. And then hopefully at maybe a future council meeting, you can weigh in and invite your peers to, you know, to talk about those, to buy into those, maybe to add to those. So nice work. I also think that, you know, here's the thing, you know, the conversation that we're going to have the rest of this afternoon and then tomorrow, these are the principles that will, that should help guide that conversation. So everything that you've put forward, you know, being authentic, having the courage, asking each other questions, learning about things. I think that that's, that that's exactly what we need to kind of invoke and, and use for this. So we'll help support everybody here in doing that. And have a good time doing it. So thank you. Now, next piece on the agenda that we wanted to spend some time on is to give, is to start the conversation around some of the communication needs. Okay. And the way in which I'd like to kind of help set this up for you is, is if we were to look at it in like two chunks, right? So first of all, this is, we're trying to give you a chance as council members to talk specifically about some of the things that you had identified with Janelle as areas to improve, or boy, you know, this one thing, and the way that communication is happening, maybe we could make a difference or make an improvement in. And today, the, the chances for you to think about it at the council level, that there might be some things in particular that you want with each other. And then tomorrow morning, again, we want to kind of bring in the things that the city team, Dave and his team can say, you know, here, for example, if one of the things that you had said was to improve the timeliness, or just make some adjustments around when you get your council packets, right? So that stuff in terms of what the city can provide, that's coming tomorrow. Make sense? So, so I wanted just to kind of stay at the group level, your group level, and to invite you to have a conversation together about some of the things that in, in that report, that you said that, you know, perhaps you could focus on and, and make a difference for, right? Because what I find is even, sometimes even just making some small adjustments in how you do something, the tone, the timing, the tenor, you know, any of those things, it can make a nice difference with, with the group. So if you happen to have your, the notes from, from Janelle, I think that was handed out as some pre-work, or not really pre-work, but did you guys get the, get the report from Janelle? Christie's saying no. Nope. Okay. Well, then let's put that aside for a moment and not look at a report, but the four of you in thinking about using this time, let's use the next 45 minutes. Actually 35 minutes, because we still wanted to have Mike Sugg provide some context for tomorrow. Let's use this time to generate a few ideas about making some improvements that you have been saying you would like. So in particular, Karen and Kent, Christie and Chris, those of you who are here, and until Pam comes back in the room and when the Ken comes back in the room, is there one particular area that you believe if you made some adjustments to, it would make your conversations, maybe the way in which you have to work together better? And you're nodding, Christie. So I, you know, I would just love to kind of bring that out and how can I help support? And how can we help support this conversation?
Yeah, I think better communication amongst council members and then also through the city manager's office out to council. I, I think we don't all operate with the same level of understanding or information. And that, that can be challenging at some points. So anyway, that's, you know, just good communication. And that can be in the form of, you know, council reports, you know, emails out to the rest of council just so that we're all operating on the same playing field.
Okay. So we're going to loop back. So why don't we first get subjects? So I've just recorded that subject, right? Better communication, reports, emails to everyone. Okay. So that's one subject. Because we want to make sure that you get clearer about, well, what does that look like, right? What can be done? What adjustments are needed? What else would you like to talk about in this 35-ish minutes? Things that are on your mind?
So is this communications between the council and staff, or is this community? Because I would say the, the short of that subject matter, if you start talking about communication and notification, we, we have a challenge in the city of Sammamish.
So Kent.
With that, and I'm, and I'm referring to maybe, I mean, it's like, okay, I, I want to be notified if a, if a development is going to happen. Well, we don't have any, maybe it's an IT question, but I've asked for those kind of, that kind of information in the past. And as a resident and as now a council member, so I mean, noted, just notification, we've gotten better. I'll, I'll give that in the last year, we're definitely, thank you, Celia. You know, our communication that's going out to the residents. We, we pick back up the newsletter. Can, can we improve on the news? So the newsletter would be another one? Yeah. So is, is that what you're asking me, Wendy? Is that, because I, I mean, communication's a broad subject matter. And so if, if I'm looking at how can the city of Sammamish as a whole, right, council staff, one would be one would be communicating to the residents better, what's going on in the city.
Right.
And so being notified of, some app we have now too is working better. Christie can probably speak more to that and others. Our, our emergency manager is doing a fine job, but there's also that whole, I, I mean, here we are in COVID and it's like, how do I get a vaccine if I'm over sixty-five years old or whatever stage we're at? So that kind of communication going out too. I mean, that, we're probably stellar, I mean, we're, we're better on that one, on emergency management than maybe some of our other ones that are just coming back online, like the newsletter. But I see, I see those as areas that we could work on. And then a, a year ago at this time, you know, the council packet would be the other one.
Right.
You know, how, when can I have that? And I, I've learned to manage my time and change my behaviors to match the time that I got, I get the information, right? But it's still a crunch to, to spend the weekend to line up my questions to get them answered by a Tuesday. So, you know, Wednesday's definitely a better day to get my packet for the next week. I get it by Thursday, can I have it in the morning? I don't know. Does that make any difference on some days to get it in the evening? Probably not, because I'm at work. So Thursday's not a big deal, Thursday night. But really, the better would be Wednesday, I can look it over and then I can start asking my questions on Thursday. And then Friday, I can get the answer from the staff, or maybe I get it back on Monday because they hadn't, you know, needed more time, but.
Got it.
Still an issue.
What I want to offer is, and I, so I appreciate some of the things that I'm hearing so far. And there's a few things that I would like for you to, to, to use this time, this afternoon, and then some of those subjects can show up tomorrow morning. So what I'm hearing, the things that you're offering, Kent in particular, I think are things that you need to interface with city department leaders and things to, like your packets and some of the, communicating with the citizens, right? That's a partnership with city leaders. And so that needs to show up, we're going to talk about, we have space tomorrow morning to talk about that. What I'm hoping for, and maybe what I'm wondering is what I'm seeing, for example, what Christie just offered as a subject that you guys could use right now, was like better communication among the council, right? You know, emails to everyone. I think that there's some procedures in that that you might talk about, that if some adjustments were made, you might feel like it's stronger, if there's anything in particular that, that you want. And welcome back, Pam. So anyway, that's, that's the topics, if that makes sense. So the space tomorrow, and I believe that Dave and the team are going to come back with a, with an offer tomorrow about when the packets could come out, being responsive to what you guys have been saying in some of your interviews. So they're coming back with some things that they think that they could make a difference with. So I want you to know that you're heard, I've captured it. So the things that you guys can talk about this afternoon, in the next half an hour or so, how do we get the ball rolling with some things that, that the council members themselves can strengthen communication?
Talk, talk about the three that Christie mentioned.
Yeah. So the things that, and just to kind of get you up to speed, Pam, these last three little bullets in the, in the chat, I've just been inviting council members to talk specifically about some things that you, that you think that you could improve at the group level, and then tomorrow, how you need to interface with city team members.
Sorry, could you repeat them? Because I left and rejoined, I don't see any of the chat. So.
Um, yeah, that's actually one of the bummer's. Let me just. I've reposted it, better communication, reports, emails to everyone. This whole piece on notifications, and then the last one that Kent had offered around communication to citizens. So what I wanted to say is that, the, the notifications and perhaps, actually, I don't know enough, but the third bullet itself, which is communication to citizens, emergency management newsletter and council packet, those are things that you guys can talk about tomorrow morning, because that's going to be interfacing with city team members. I, I don't know enough about notifications, whether that's notifications together that you guys are responding. Okay. So, shall we invite the, the five of you now to talk a little bit about what, and do it this way? What improvement ideas? Because I'm sure you've been thinking about, boy, if we just did it this way, it would make things better, right? So what are some things that you can own, you would want to make a difference in better communication by your reports and emails to everyone? What do you think about that? What might that look like for the five of you?
Well, I'll start. I, I would love to see us copy council on, you know, it should be like ninety-five percent of the emails we send. There should be a, it should be an exception when you're sending mails where you don't copy the rest of council, right? So that everyone is aware of what's happening. Or if you feel like there has to be a sidebar conversation, that there's a commitment, that there will be a mail that goes to all of council summarizing that periodically, that we don't go too far or too long. And I, I recognize that I, I'm, you know, i- in the minority, but I don't get included in many of the conversations. And if there are only verbal conversations going on, sending out a summary, I think to, to the, the reports kind of thing, just sending out a quick summary that says, hey, we talked, you know, I talked to so-and-so, or these people talked and talked about this, so that everybody knows what's happening. I think transparency in government is always critical. And I think that we all have a responsibility, every one of us, and I'm not, I'm not just saying other people, I'm saying me too. We all have a responsibility to provide as much transparency as possible. There's, there should be very little, unless Lisa is involved, that we shouldn't be sharing, right? With, with, at, at a minimum, the entire council and to whatever extent possible to the public. It just is so important that it be, that it be inclusive and not, not something that surprises people or that people are excluded. So I would love to see us have a, a rule that says, with the exception of these things, mails go to the whole council. Could we do that? Is that, is that possible? I think that would be awesome.
Let's talk about that.
Wendy, I didn't catch what you said there.
I didn't. I was about ready to just invite the four of you, you know, you kind of have an offer on the table from one of your colleagues. And what are some of your thoughts around that? Is that doable? Do you know, what do you think?
I, I think that's certainly reasonable. And I think, you know, it, it could apply on so many different levels. And, you know, I think about it in terms of specifically like if a resident emails us, I think what I see happening now, that didn't used to be part of kind of our council culture, if you will, is that council members individually will email and they cut off the rest of the council when they respond to a resident. And then sometimes we get looped back in, so then you see that there was a response from a council member. I would offer up that, an, an idea that the city of Redmond does is they assign a council member on a weekly basis to basically respond to residents. So that one, all council members know that the resident was responded to, but then two, that you don't have a whole bunch of council members responding with maybe differing information. And if, you know, Pam, for example, was the council member for week one, we would all know that, hey, that's Pam's job for that week, nobody else needs to respond. The caveat there is, of course, sometimes we all individually get emails from residents rather than them emailing the full council. So the caveat there would be, well, if they end up emailing you individually, you know, and we're responding to a resident, do we throw the whole council on there as well? So, you know, one could say, if you want to, you know, have real transparency, then yes, we should be throwing the whole council on there. That way, all council members are aware of the issues being raised in the community to which we're charged with, you know, creating policy for it. It's harder to create policy if you're unaware of existing issues out in the community. So, you know, it's something that we could embed in our council rules if, you know, the majority of council is amenable to that.
Thanks, Christie.
Christie, I, I wondered too, even just, you know, I know staff gets a ton of mail and I don't want to get inundated with information, because we couldn't possibly. But should we, should we have a way that we get some sort of summary? If, if something comes up and staff gets more than X number of communications on a topic, that there's something that goes out to council that says, hey, this thing came up and we're getting a lot of mail, right? Because again, I don't want to micromanage what anybody does, but if there is a lot of conversation or interest or concern in the community, making sure that the entirety of the council is aware. In, in a very balanced way, I'm not, I don't want to add a lot of extra work to the staff, but just for that transparency and awareness sake. Because if we, you know, and I'm sorry that I missed things, but, you know, going back to that values conversation, Christie and I talked about, you know, taking the SCA approach, which is assuming everyone's coming from a good place. If we all want to serve the community and we all want to meet the community's needs, if we don't know that people are concerned about X, and then we speak about something and we don't, and we sound like we don't care about X, well, it's because we didn't know people were concerned. And if we don't know, we certainly can't, can't respond or learn more or take the appropriate action. And again, I, I look to staff to, to push back and say, don't create too much more work for us, but there should be some balanced way to provide that level of visibility without creating a lot of extra work. I look at Dave, because I'm sure he, Dave and Kelly probably get, get a ton of mail and I, I don't want to overwhelm you, but.
I would, Pam, I, I don't disagree with you, but I, I actually would offer up that I think staff actually does loop us in when they get, you know, emails that are from, you know, multiple sources on any given topic. And I'll, I'll point to a specific example that I can think of. And that's when David Pyle brought forward some of the development regulation changes that we recently adopted, because he was hearing and basically cataloging a lot of the complaints he was hearing. And while he might not have said, hey, look, I'm getting a lot of complaints about this email and emailed to it, instead, what we saw at council was that get bubbled up in the form of, you know, hey, we could do some development regulations and here's an agenda bill to consider those. So I don't know, I, I mean, it's, it's up to staff to say whether or not they get a whole bunch of emails and they just decide not to tell council. But I suspect that those come trickling back to us, maybe in the form of a work plan item.
And, and I, I, again, I think staff does, does great work, but to maybe help us all know, at what point do you bubble that up? Like, is it, is it just an internal barometer where you're like, that felt like too many, and so we bubble it up? Or do you have some sort of a threshold that, that says, you know, it's a small, it's a small thing, but we got a hundred emails on it, so that makes us bring it forward? Versus like you have, it's a big thing, we only got two emails on it, but it's a big deal, so we brought it forward. You know, we, that's what we use, like in software development, right? We have severity and, and priority. And, and those are two things that help determine when you fix a bug, right? If only one person complains about it, but it, it, it completely bricks your machine, meaning your machine is unusable, then it's something we have to go fix, even if it only hits one person, right? Versus this has a really low impact on people, it's not a big deal, it's kind of just a minor inconvenience. But once it hits a certain threshold of users, then that bubbles it up to being important. And maybe just explaining to us what those thresholds are that you use as your internal barometer, so that we know if we're not hearing from you, it hasn't crossed one of those types of thresholds, that might be helpful too. And knowing that you're always including all of council and not just maybe a council member who asked about it, that also helps too, because then we just know that, we know, we know what we need to know. Does that make sense? You know?
Awesome. And so again, we're going to loop back a little bit in the morning for some of these, like the second part of what I've been typing in. But the first, I want to look back, because it's important to get some closure on some of the things you're putting forward so that you as a group know that you've made a decision. And that one, I, I want to kind of go back up to the, the suggestion about if a resident emails you, do you want to try that city of Redmond example, where one of you takes on a week and that person is that point person with the citizen, and then you loop in and somehow you share the essence. You know, you can decide, what does that look like then? How do you loop in the rest of you? So I've heard Christie and Pam weigh in on that. You know, Chris or, you know, Karen, Kent, what are some of your thinking about that particular suggestion? Is that something you want to give it a shot? I mean, I'm a big fan of testing things out, trying it for a while and say, is it helpful? Is it giving us the data? Are we being responsive? I mean, all the things that are important to you. So I'll be quiet. What are some of the things you're thinking? Do you want to buy in on this?
I, I personally think each council member may have a different perspective, passion on a certain issue raised by a citizen. And some may want to say, address it differently than others, or in more comprehensively than others. And so the only disadvantage of that suggestion is it may restrict those who would want to jump in and really provide outstanding service to the residents, which we all do. And so maybe a hybrid of that would be, rather than assign it, ha- have a protocol of when you respond to a citizen that is distributing it to the full council, that the, that the response should be copying the full council. Then the rest of the council knows that someone has already responded. And there may be an opportunity to add additional information on that tag, but we're not providing redundant information, which is really what we're trying to avoid, and give them a best service to our citizens and their questions.
What do you guys think about that? I'm curious, you know, so far, does that sound like something you, you know, is it working for you so far with like, you know, Chris's offering sort of a hybrid? Does that, does that land for you? Do you want to try that? You know, Kent, what are some of your thinking, Karen?
Yeah, I'm a pretty easygoing, so, and I like new things. So I like the hybrid approach. Really, I think we kind of already do the hybrid approach, at least from a lot of them. And then a lot of the emails that I get from residents, it's pretty much forwarded off to staff for staff to take care of. So, I mean, the dog park thing was maybe one example of where, you know, we responded on the dog park. How, you know, why don't we use beaten, beat, what is it, beaten hill for a dog park, you know? So that, that information, but that, again, it went back to staff. So, but, but the initial response was from council, which was nice, and residents got to hear from us. And so, and it was nice to be included in on that, CC'd in on that, so that I was looped in. But, I mean, some of the, like, I think Chris is right, some of the stuff, it's like, it's, it, it should be handled by staff. If it's going to be handled by me, then that's, that's a different story, right? Then it could CC out to the whole council. We also, I would like to see as a, as a council that we communicate, i- if, if committees are formed, you know, there was the communication between the committee members. Well, that, you know, we were working through work product and then it was like, then once we had something, we, then we sent it out to the, the full council. So that, is that, that would, to me, would consider it a hybrid too. You know, as the situations arise, what kind of communication is being sent out? Well, some of it just depends on how we receive the information. Most recent one I can think of is a gentleman who just sent pictures and a, and probably a code enforcement issue, but that wasn't my call either, but the whole council received that, including the city manager. And then the city manager took care of it, so with probably community development and code enforcement. So seems to me that a hybrid would be a beneficial one. But I also have seen though, it's like, really? Sometimes the, the response really should just go to one council member, like a thank you. I don't need a thank you if, if I thank somebody for something, I don't need to send that to the full council. I mean, unless you want me to, I mean, transparency, okay, sure. I was appreciative of these staff people or these fellow council members or, you know. You, do we want all those communications go out as well?
No, I, I think that's, you know, a, a fair point, but no, Kent, I, nothing drives me crazy than filling my inbox. than filling my inbox with everybody saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, we have enough emails, I think we all do. And this is not the only email address that most of us are probably um, having to look at in any given day, so.
Yeah, I try to be respectful that, you know, it's others' time, right? And, and people have a tendency to feel like, because I have that title, council member, that, you know, they need to say something in response. And it's like, that just, sometimes that's just time and energy that someone may not have, but they do it anyway. And so I try to be at least respectful on my communication and my responses.
I think we use our current council rules as a guide as to what is important to include your fellow council members in. That's probably the best guide we have. And it says, and I'm paraphrasing here, because I don't have our council rules in front of us. But it's, if you, if there's a reasonable expectation that the information that you have or would be sharing would be of, of value to your fellow council members, that's when you include them. Thank you is not, you know, there doesn't, in, in that, uh, not wholesale, but you know what I'm saying? So, yeah, I think that might be our guide.
I agree, Christie, cause so one of the things that I'm the alternate, alternate on the pick committee. And uh, except for technical difficulty on this last meeting we just had, I've been to all of them. And um, I was sending them out in uh, notes in my council reports. And then I got to, Chrissy's the chair and she's providing the same information that I'm providing to you. So it was like, well, really, uh, do I need to then double up on that report? Um, now I have also at times thought, you know, I could share a different perspective if you'd like. But that really isn't the point of it. The point was, here's what SCA is saying, or here's what the pick committee is doing. And here's what we are moving on legislation or whatever it is, uh, whatever is on their agenda. Well, so do you want me to, is it required of me then? Cause I'd be more than happy to do that, but is it required of me then to double up because I'm the alternate?
No, I, I think Kent, the, the bigger point would be, and this is a terrible example, because Christie is, Christie definitely uh, gets ranked number one. Christie generally uh, provides that. I think the, the key there is if that, or the example, if Christie didn't send a report, one of you needs to, right? So, and it needs to go to the whole council, right? And I think that's the key. And I think when it comes to responding to, to the citizens or sharing information with the citizens, it's just important that the council knows what information is being shared. So that if the city manager is sending out something to a citizen, right? We don't have to be copied on every single mail, but if information is being shared, is there a way that we can know what that is? If it's, if it's a recurring thing, or if it's a big deal, or if it's something where action's being taken, I don't know what that threshold is. But to identify what that is, so that we as council know, everything above this line, you're being included on, and anything below this line is stuff that you probably don't need to worry about, so don't worry about it, right? And I think that the, from my perspective, the problem is, there's no line, so we don't know. We don't know what we're being included on, we don't know what we're not being included on. And I think that's all we need to do is if we just e- establish that expectation, then we can figure out how to tweak it going forward, but there just doesn't exist that expectation of what we are and aren't being copied on and included in.
So, like between each other, like me to you and?
Well, or, or conversations between a council member and, and the city manager, right? If you're talking with Dave about a particular topic, at some point, the entire council needs to be included. It shouldn't just be that when it appears on my packet on Friday night, that's the first time I'm hearing about this being a topic, right? It, it's, it's, there's, I just don't see any reason not to share more. Why would we share less? That, that's kind of where I come from.
Okay, so, so can I use an example then, since we're having this conversation, which I really appreciate, by the way? So stormwater, stormwater is definitely something I've been working on for six months, how about eight? Eight months, alright? It's, it's been a slow process, but uh, I'm really proud of, of the staff. I'm really proud of, of uh, what's, what's being produced. We, as soon as it was something that was ready to come to the council, staff presented it to us in twos and threes. Now, I'll just let you know, there was probably four or five emails that went back and forth uh, prior to that. Uh, mostly just check-ins on my part to keep it moving forward, right? And you want, you, would the ca- rest of the council want me to be CCing you on that I'm still pursuing stormwater?
I guess, just taking that example and not knowing what was discussed, if, if you have reached out and said, stormwater matters to me, right? This, this, you know, this is my heart and I want to see stormwater move forward, there should be something that says, you know, hey, council member Trin wants us to focus on stormwater, so we're, we're embarking on the stormwater. Does anybody else have any input on things that are important to them that they want us to consider before we put together a package and present it in twos and threes? Right? Because that feels like, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting this, but that feels like something you had some concerns, you, you gave them to staff. Staff went and worked on them and then they came and presented it to us. A little more heads up to just know, this is what's going on. So if we had something, we wanted to make sure got included in that before the twos and threes, we'd have that, that time and that opportunity. Again, it's not assuming anything nefarious, it's just a, I'd rather have a chance to participate before it felt like something was being put in, in some sort of a package and came back to me.
Well, and, and, and I'll just say this, that, you know, initially it was, I put it out there on an email uh, to put it on the agenda, so we could have an open conversation about what we should be doing and moving forward with stormwater. And, and, and for some reason, it, it didn't get onto the agenda. And so, so it was, I was asking and, and then it was a matter of just getting it on the agenda, right? And then it.
Enough traction to get on the agenda, but the staff started working on it.
It was, I, I did have enough votes to get it on the agenda, so the communication was clear at that time. And there was enough council members who wanted to move it forward, uh, including Jason Ritchie at the time. And so um,
And I wasn't accusing you of doing anything wrong, we were just.
I know, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, is, is then, is the communication then need to be, then should I then again be communicating out to the full council? That, hey, I, we got enough, and I maybe I made a mistake here. Should I have been saying, hey, council, we, I need you to back me up on this?
No, I think it's more if you raise specific concerns, right? So you put it out there and, and I'm kind of making some of this up, you put it out there and said, hey, I think we should talk about stormwater. And two other council members said, yes, let's put that on the agenda. But then you had a list of ten concerns you wanted, you wanted to make sure were addressed. That list would be great to make sure that all of council was copied. Staff came back and said, hey, Ken, Kent, we're working on stormwater and we came across this. Should this be included? That's the kind of thing that it probably is good to just include us all on. Because sometimes we don't think about it until you see that email and you're like, oh, I hadn't thought about that part of stormwater. Maybe that's something we should think more about. So that's really what I'm talking about. And again, I'm, I'm making that up, but I'm just saying, there's no reason not to include all of, it's a CC. Like the cool thing about email is if you copy the council and you do it on the CC line, I can choose what kind of filters to put on, and I can choose when to engage and when to read those. But I'm copied on it so that I'm just aware, right? Now, if you put me on the two line, that tells me I should, you know, I need to really know and I really need to take action. But if you're just copying me, then that's a decision I get to make. And because it's email, it doesn't cost any additional money to just throw somebody on the CC line.
Yeah, what I'm trying to kind of get a handle on is that what, what kind of information is above the line? As you call it, right? So it's like, what, what, what information would my fellow council members need from me? When I address an issue like, like stormwater with staff? And then what would be the, and I like that idea, just CC the coun- the city council instead of a two. Right? It's like, okay, this is going to Dave and to, I'll use pile, since he's, is David pile around, yeah, I'll use David pile for an example. Uh, and it's something about uh, uh, some development regulation or some development that's going on. Then CCing the city council is, then you filter it out and say, I, I don't need to, this is no big deal. Or maybe it is, you click on and it's like, oh, well, that's something I'm interested, we need to talk about that. And maybe then it comes to the full council. Is that what you're talking about Pam? Is that kind of what the?
That is absolutely it. I mean, we don't have carbon paper anymore, right? It used to be hard when you wanted to CC somebody, you had to put extra paper in and use that carbon paper and it got all over your fingers, right? That's what the CC stands for is a carbon copy. With email, there's no messiness on your fingers, you just throw, throw an alias on the, uh, on the CC line. And now we all know, and we can choose to ignore it or we can choose to engage. But now we know, and we know it's like, oh, you know, I hadn't thought about that. Like sometimes, again, some of these things are just like, you know, we're not all experts at all of these things. And so it's really informative and helpful.
Yeah, it's kind of like what Dave, Dave Rudat does with uh, with uh, you know, with the roadway that buckled or whatever. There was the repair that needed to go on, he just CC'd all of us on that. Did I really need to know that information? No, I need, but he, but if someone were to call us, then we have, we have the ability to answer a residence.
Perfect, perfect.
That makes sense, makes sense.
Yeah, I have a quick comment, or Wendy, you were going to say something?
No, go ahead, Chris.
Okay, my quick comment is that we can see this is very complex to prescribe communication. And, and um, even if you did the hybrid approach or the Redmond approach, there is a disadvantage of uh, uh, centralizing your communication to residents, because many residents uh, may uh, do count how many council members respond to them a- as a showing of who, 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 are they listening to me? Do they care about my concern? And if we are only having one person respond, it may send the wrong message. Now, there is instances where we can definitely streamline and, and this is an easy fix. Anytime we refer to staff, we should get in the habit as a council that one of us responds to that. A resident says, we're forwarding this to the uh, uh, stormwater um, director to, to, to work. And I'm copying the rest of the council to let them know that this um, uh, referral has already been completed. Something to that effect, so that we all don't do it, that we do it once. And they know that the rest of the council doesn't have a further action, that it's now in the hands of staff. Referrals to staff, we can come up with a common practice, I think. The rest of it is complicated, uh, and I, you know, it's, it's a matter of keeping each other informed.
Thanks, Chris. This might be a nice time in a moment to, you know, to, to, to put a pause on this part of the conversation. I think that you've got several things that you have put out there to, to consider. And what I'd like to do is let you kind of marinate on it and then tomorrow, let's kind of get some agreement, right? Do you want to give it a shot around this, a hybrid or an approach around the city of Redmond model? What does that look like? Who's going to be responsible for signing weeks? You know, just marinate on that, think about that, so that you can come to some conclusion. This last piece, you know, you're, you're giving some examples of when you might want to copy each other. You know, so again, I think you've got some agreements here, but let's make sure that we kind of run through those tomorrow, so that you are clearer. And then we can invite Dave and his team, because some of the things that you've offered this afternoon or some of the questions are things that they can weigh in on. Um, they may have some things that might help you understand some of the thresholds, right? Uh, and I think it's a, it's a great way to kind of share information with you and then to come to some uh, agreements. So that, you know, you feel you're getting the information so that you can serve in your role the best possible way. And so that, you know, city leaders can do their work in the best possible way, right? I think you, you all have really good intentions around that. And so just making some of these adjustments, so that, you know, I mean, I was even noticing some of the, like, yeah, that's kind of, that would make a difference. So even just making some of these small shifts about when you copy the others and doing um, some of these things, it'll make a difference for you. So I just want to make sure that it's looking, that we get a little cleaner tomorrow. Uh, and get to some of the agreement that you're looking for. And then let Dave and his team kind of weigh in on some of the more strategic things that the city team members can help you with. So sound good? Kind of pausing this right now and then picking it up tomorrow?
Um, I just have a question of clarification for you, Wendy. So um, you were talking about for tomorrow, that we're going to continue the conversation on communications. So uh, will there be time for us, for, as from a staff standpoint, to do an overview of what we're currently doing to get everyone up to speed? Is that, is that, is that the intention?
No, there won't be time to do that. One of the things that you could make an agreement for after tomorrow is like, you know, we can, we can share with you. I mean, for example, if you have some particular thresholds and you have, you know, like, like Pam was off asking about, you know, when is it, do you throw things um, to the council, right? And, and so if you already have a few statements around that, um, you know, that might be useful to, to share, but we don't have a lot of time packed into.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't need to prepare something, so that's okay.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
You, you can weigh in and answer some of the questions that might emerge in the morning too, so.
I will, thank you, thank you very much.
I appreciate that, thanks. So, so far, nice good, you know, so far, uh, nice job. Uh, appreciate you sharing the things that are important to you. Let's, we want to set you up also, it, tomorrow is a packed day. So we're trying in a way to kind of set you up for success as well with talking about, and Mike, I'm going to put you on in just a moment. Mike is going to share a little bit about um, the process that, that he and his team members went through to kind of create the draft work plan and priorities for you. Right? Cause what's important is that you know that you were heard in those interviews and the information that you put forward from that. And then Mike is going to talk about how not only your input went into the development of this proposed work plan and priorities, but that there are other things that kind of weigh in too, like indicators. Um, you know, things that are happening in the world that really need to be considered also when work plans are created. You know, for example, one thing has to be done sometimes before something else. So anyway, he's going to share with you uh, those highlights, we want to set you up, um, so that you can think about that tonight. And um, we have our conversation tomorrow about them, because the goal tomorrow is for you to feel comfortable with the proposed priorities and proposed work plan. Alright, that's, that's the goal, that's the intention. And so we want to make sure that you feel like you have your questions answered. Um, so Mike?
Yes, thank you, Wendy. Uh, if I can just have a quick moment to set up, I'm going to share my screen, so I can scroll through the work plan here. Let me see. Okay. Alright. Uh, good afternoon, council. For any members of the public that are on the meeting, again, my name is Mike Sugg. I'm the senior management analyst in the city manager's office. And as Wendy had mentioned, the intent of this agenda item is to introduce you to the 2021 work plan and priorities document in preparation for our discussion tomorrow. I know we're running short on time, so I'll try and uh, move as quickly as I can. The draft work plan document is attached to tomorrow's agenda and uh, hopefully you've all had a chance to take a peek at it. You will notice that the format of the document is uh, has many similarities to the one we presented last year. Uh, however, there have been some tweaks based on past council feedback we heard. Uh, there was, there's quite a bit of changes we made from last year. But there's always room for improvement and we would, of course, appreciate any feedback for how we can make it more useful and relevant for council. Uh, please keep in mind, the work plan is council focused. So what you'll see on the work plan are mainly items that will come in front of council in 2021. It doesn't include the large amount of regular day-to-day ongoing items such as maintenance, events, contracts, permitting, et cetera. When really the, the routine items such as these make up the bulk of our work. But uh, they, they just weren't the focus of this more targeted council oriented plan. You will notice at the end of the document that we've included draft three-year capital project calendars for parks, facilities, streets and stormwater, which show the anticipated, anticipated phases of each project from planning through construction uh, within that three-year window. And I will scroll down uh, to an example section here in the work plan attachment, that's on Friday's agenda. And we'll look at um, the sheets here. Over the, the past few years, we've grouped our work plan items into eight focus areas rather than uh, by department. And this is really to emphasize the, the cross-departmental nature of, of our work. You know, there, as you can see here under the environmental health and protection worksheet, you have projects from both DCD and public works that are kind of working towards that, that focus of, of protecting our environment. And each item, I'll just kind of walk through the, the organization of the sheet here. Each item has. Each item has a unique identifying number to it, a short description, one or two sentences, and then identifies the lead department. The critical column here, um, has three options for what can be in it. So if it's blank, as this one shows, that means that the item is generally a discretionary work plan item. So these are the items that can be delayed to a future year or potentially removed from the work plan altogether. If there is an X in this cell, that means the item is critical, it's considered critical, and it needs to be completed this year in the opinion of staff. For example, if we have a project that's, uh, already very well underway, you know, we have money invested, it's, it's just about done. It's not something we should really, really be, be delayed. That'd be an example of, of a critical project. And then if there's an M in this column, that means the item is mandated by law. So that option was added last year at the suggestion of council member Ross. And, uh, it is helpful for showing those items that we absolutely must get done this year. There's nothing mandatory on this sheet that you're seeing here, but likely the most obvious example I can think of would be the budget, uh, which we all know is required by state law. Uh, the priority column next to the critical column is a bit of a gray area right now and it will hopefully become clear once we have that discussion tomorrow. Uh, if there is an X in this column, staff assumed that the project was a priority for council. Since we don't have those priorities defined just yet, this was simply an exercise in, um, a guessing exercise based on things that we've heard, you know, at council meetings during twos and threes, things like that. So some are fairly obvious priorities for 2021, such as the COVID relief funding and the EIS work. Others were less obvious. And this is part of what we'd like to discuss tomorrow is confirming those priority projects. On the right-hand side, there's the timeline box. And, uh, boxes that are shaded gray indicate staff will be working on the item in that month. And where you see the red shaded boxes indicate the council touchpoints. So the projects will be coming to council in that month. Uh, projected to come into council that month. There's a 2020 box here at the, uh, the front of the timeline for projects that had started before this year and a 2022 box for projects that will go into next year. And finally, there are seven optional projects, which I'm kind of circling here on the screen. Um, there's two on this sheet and the, the remaining five are on other sheets. And these optional projects are generally recommended by the city manager and staff. However, there's currently no budget approved for them and it would therefore require some council action should we want to add these to our 2021 work plan. Uh, so something else to look at as you're, you're reviewing tonight. I would like to move on to the, the priority summary sheet at the top next, but I want to pause here and ask if there are any questions on how we've organized the plan or anything else I've talked about so far. So any, any questions? I can't see the screen because I'm sharing, so please, uh, inform me if anybody's.
I don't see any questions coming through, um, for you, Mike.
Great. Mike, did you send this in an email to us?
I can't, this is attached to the agenda for tomorrow. So if you go into the work plan heading tomorrow.
That's where it is. I, I, okay, thanks.
Alrighty. So we will next scroll up to our priority summary sheet here towards the top of the attachment. See. Uh, so we talked about how staff had made some assumptions of the council's priorities as we were completing the draft work plan. Basically what this one pager does is pulls up all of those items that have the X in the priority box into kind of a, a one-page summary view. Uh, you'll notice that some projects have, um, a yellow star on them. And I believe that, uh, as we talked about earlier, most council members were able to attend a pre-retreat interview with Janelle that Debbie had scheduled a few weeks ago. Well, Janelle reported back that she heard, that she had asked the council about their priorities. And there were a few general themes that arose in most council members' answers. Um, so projects that align with that interview feedback are starred to show how kind of what you all were mentioning in the, the interviews translates to the work plan. So for example, uh, Janelle mentioned that environmental topics were, were a high priority for the council. And, uh, some examples that council members provided were like stormwater projects, the, the EIS and things like that. So you'll see all of those are starred. Uh, you will see the areas council mentioned in the interviews actually align quite closely with staff's initial suggestions of the priorities. The intent here isn't to say that the starred items are the council's only priorities. It's simply to show how the interview feedback aligns with the work plan. And I also wanted to note that, uh, what we're discussing here are priorities related to specific projects. Um, so the council, they may have, uh, in their discussions tomorrow, some ideas of non-project-specific priorities for this year. Um, you know, things that apply more generally to the city as opposed to an individual project. So that's kind of the, the priorities piece of tomorrow's agenda. The last thing I wanted to mention was the, uh, discussion questions which are included in the cover memo. You can zoom in on those. Um, as you are thinking about the work plan and priorities in preparation for tomorrow, uh, there are a few questions on your screen that you might start thinking about, um, and bring your thoughts to the meeting. First, do we have any questions about the proposed work plan items? We'll have the directors that we had here today on the line, um, and they'll be able to, to help answer any questions. Uh, second, should we consider adding or removing or adjusting any work plan items? Uh, for example, if we add projects that require significant resources, it may require pulling off some other items to balance the department capacities. Also think about those optional projects and whether there is a desire to add any to the work plan this year or we could potentially park them for a future year. Finally, what are the council's priorities? Uh, we do feel, um, what, what do we feel is critical to, uh, complete this year? And following the priorities discussion, staff, uh, can work up a graphic to display the priorities so that staff and council can keep them top of mind as we're working throughout the year. And this is something that we did back in 2018, um, after the retreat. So our hope is that tomorrow we'll reveal some clear council priorities and build consensus around the work plan. I'd anticipate there will need to be some refinements to this document, uh, after the discussion. And staff can make those revisions and come back to the council at a future meeting, uh, for, for approval. And that's all I've got for the introduction. We're happy to answer any questions you might have right now or don't hesitate to call or email me, uh, after the retreat ends here tonight, if I can provide any more information, uh, for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I know you're gonna, if you could, you can stop screen sharing for a moment. Pam had a question that she typed into chat about what are the five themes and how that kind of showed up in Janelle's, um, Janelle's report?
Yes, uh, let me pull my notes here. The five themes were?
As you pull that up too, Mike. Let's make a note that at the conclusion of our, uh, first part of our retreat, you take that document and let's resend it out to all the participants.
The, the work plan document I just walked through?
Um, well, the work plan document, yeah, I know you sent that, but Janelle's notes.
Gotcha.
They're going to be an attachment. Um, we want to make sure that they have them so they can reflect on those too. But please go forward now, but that way they'll have it as a tangible document.
Absolutely. We will send those out, uh, once we log off here. So the, the five general areas were the environment. And some examples, as I mentioned, were stormwater issues, the EIS, uh, things like that. The second was town center related topics. Um, there wasn't much, too much expansion on that. The third was development and associated regulations. So school and road capacities, impact fees, growth management, things in that vein. The fourth, uh, I paraphrased a little bit, but it essentially COVID response and human services related issues. And the fifth is the sustainability of the city, not only from an environmental and growth perspective, but also from a diversity standpoint, such as options for older community members, affordable housing and cultural sustainability. So those are the five themes that you'll see in the handout.
Thanks, Mike. So again, we were just trying to give you sort of the overview so that you could see, uh, what staff is, is presenting, what areas you, can see aligned with your pre-conferent or pre-retreat, uh, input. Uh, and, you know, one of the requests also was to see when approximately it would come. So you see the timeline. So hopefully that, that document, the work plan, the prep for tomorrow feels, you feel as comfortable as possible and kind of looking at that and being ready to engage in the conversation. So thank you, Mike, for that overview and, and everybody else. So let's, let's go ahead and do, um, in just a moment, we're going to do a quick checkout, but, um, summary for today. Uh, so first of all, thank you for your afternoon, helping to set the, the tone and the context. Uh, thank you, uh, Lita and Debbie and Mike, who have been taking notes during the day and as well as we have the recording. Uh, so we have that available to, to you. We'll be revisiting some of your notes that we've been talking about in terms of communication. So as you marinate on things tonight, be thinking about, um, you know, how we want to formalize that in a way with some particular language or examples like you were doing so beautifully this afternoon. And then getting you set up for the work plan conversation tomorrow. So thanks in advance for the work that you might do tonight to think about that. Any quick questions before we start to do our signing off? Okay. And one of the things that we put in the agenda, I didn't know if it was, if, you know, try, last year you had the ability to meet in person in a, in a casual way in the evening. If council members wanted an evening where you just, you know, tonight, Zoom hour, if you wanted to do that. You can raise your hand, you can send a quick email and we can set that up if that's something that's, uh, that's of interest to you. Recognize that there's also some things I know that you want to prepare for tomorrow. Is that something that you would like to set some time aside, just in a, in a casual way to have an evening virtually? Kent? What I can do is, um, I'll, I'll set up the Zoom room and, um, we'll send you the link. And it would be, um, optional to, to attend, but in a, in a casual setting with no agenda, just to connect with each other and, talk about whatever you, you know, you would normally if you were having dinner together, right? Just like you did in the past. All right. So I will, uh, we'll make sure through Dave will send that out. Dave, did you want to weigh in on that?
Sure. Uh, if council would like to participate, I absolutely would.
Awesome. Okay. Well, we'll send that to you.
Yet not having to provide wine.
What was that?
What was that, Mayor?
Nevermind.
Karen, I was just thinking that I was disappointed in you that you didn't have a bottle of wine delivered to each of our houses in preparation for the season. That's what I was thinking, but I didn't want to say, so.
Well, I haven't gotten home yet, Karen, so you can deliver it to my place.
There is something about enjoying a, a beverage of your choice, right? In a, in a setting that doesn't feel, you know, that's much, much more casual that is a nice time. So hopefully you can join us tonight. That would be lovely.
Pam, you're not that far away.
I, I would never refuse a gift. That would be rude.
I like it.
And we're still looking at about the seven o'clock hours, the witching hour.
Does that sound good? Great. Thanks, Dave. All right. So let's do a quick one-word checkout. Okay. How are you leaving the room today? And the only word that's off the table is tired because you've all worked hard and we give you, you know, your brain's been functioning. So, um, let's get everybody in the room here that has their, uh, camera on a chance to, to weigh in on your one-word checkout. So whoever wants to start, then you call in the next person until everybody gets a chance to go.
I'll start off optimistic. And then I'll defer over to, I'll look at my screen and, um, the next person over on my screen is Celia.
Busy?
Call in the next person, Celia. You are on mute. Who do you want to, who do you want to call in? Try it one more time. You're still on mute.
Jesus. Okay, sorry. Karen, wrap.
Thirsty. I'm going to go to Mike Sugg.
My word, same as Dave's, optimistic. I'll go to, uh, council member Ross. Mike's encouraged.
Who's next, Chris? You gotta go off mic.
I'll go Chris. I'll say hopeful.
Thank you.
Hey Debbie, who are you calling on next?
I will call on Christie Melchow, please.
Not sure she's back.
Okay, I will go Jim. Well done, Jim.
Oh, okay. Constructive. And I'll go to Erin.
I'll say encouraged. Uh, let's go to Lisa.
Um, engaged. How about Danica?
Um, cautious. Leave it at that. I love Lita.
Um, I'll say encouraged. Let's see, who do I have? Kevin?
Sure, I'd say hopeful. How about you, Aunt Julie?
I'd say engaged. Cristiani?
I'm feeling more informed than I was before. Okay, one word, informed. And I'll go to, I'm going to find who's left here. Jeff?
Teamwork. David Pyle. Mindful. Who, who else has left? Has everyone gone? Oh, council member Trine.
I'm hopeful. And I'll, I'll go to Chris.
I think both Chris's already went.
Yeah, but I'll give encouraged again.
And did Kelly go?
Did Pam go?
Pam, Pam.
Um, I'll, I'll say transparent with a question mark.
Good one.
And, uh, yeah, I think Kelly.
Um, I'm going to say hopeful. And said every, Erin, Erin, did you go?
Yeah. I think we're back to Wendy.
Hopeful and encouraged.
Wait your hand. Is anybody not gone yet? Sweet, you can toss it back to me. Uh, I am. What was that? Did I miss somebody? Okay, good. Uh, gosh, you guys are doing awesome. So awesome is my word. So nice work. I'm ready for tomorrow. So we'll see you tonight at seven in a relaxed space and we'll see everybody else tomorrow at nine, ready to go for a great day. Do what you need to do to be ready. So we're looking forward to it. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Wendy.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.